We're ready whenever you want to start, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Just checking my mic again, we're okay? Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting of September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one at seven forty-five P M. City Clerk, preamble please.
This meeting is compliant with the Governor's Executive Order N dash zero eight dash twenty-nine issued on June eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, allowing for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Purpose of this is to provide the safest environment for staff, council members, and the public while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options. The council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Members of the public may view the City Council meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar listed below. City Council meetings can also be viewed live and or on demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube dot com forward slash Brisbane C A or on Comcast Channel twenty-seven. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website, brisbaneca dot org forward slash meetings. The City Council meeting will be an exclusively virtual meeting. City Council agenda materials may be viewed online at brisbaneca dot org at least twenty-four hours prior to a special meeting and at least seventy-two hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text sign will also be monitored during the meeting and public comments received will be noted for the record during oral communications one and two or during an item. Email ipadia at brisbaneca dot org, text six-two-eight-two-one-nine-two-nine-two-two. Join the Zoom webinar, zoom dot U S with the I D nine-nine-one-nine-three-six-two-eight-six-six-six and the passcode one-two-three-four-five-six and the caller number one-six-six-nine-nine-zero-zero-nine-one-two-eight. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the City Clerk at four-one-five-five-zero-eight-two-one-one-three. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ingrid. Item number one is the call to order and the pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Item two is roll call. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Lance?
Here.
Councilmember Mackin?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Here. Thank you.
We'd also need a report out of closed session from our city attorney.
May I have a report out from closed session, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council met in closed session and heard items D, E, and F on the public, publicized agenda. Liability claim council was given, was given direction to staff to deny the claim on the conference with the real property negotiator under regarding twenty-five part place. Staff responded to last minute or clarifying questions and the matter will be taken up on the agenda this evening as item M during this meeting. As for item F, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, staff gave follow-up direction.
Item three is adoption of the agenda. Can I get a first and second to adopt the agenda as it stands?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Item four is awards and presentations. Item A is the water update from Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, BASCAL, our board appointee. Tonight, we are joined by Seppi Richardson, our BASCAL board appointee. Thank you, Seppi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council members. Thank you, staff, and thank you, the public. I appreciate, first of all, for allowing me to continue my service on the BASCAL, which represents nine Bay Area counties plus SFPUC. Tonight, I'm very honored to give you an update of water supply first, and then I will talk about SFPUC alternative water supply programs. As of August thirtieth, Hetch Hetchy was at seventy-four percent capacity and total system storage was at sixty-eight point five percent capacity as of September thirteenth, both way below the average at this time of the year. We are in a statewide drought and precipitation in the Tuolumne River watershed and in the Bay Area, which is way below historical averages. The governor has asked for a fifteen percent voluntary, voluntary water use reduction compared to twenty-twenty water use levels. In addition, in July, the State Water Resources Control Board issued a notice of water unavailability applicable to the SFPUC for its points of diversion in the Tuolumne River watershed. In August, the state board issued a curtailment order for these same points of diversion that will be in effect for one year. The state's boards notices provide for the request for exceptions to the curtailment, including an exemption for human health and safety. The SFPUC will be closely monitoring precipitation and water use in the coming months and preparing to take further action if necessary. According to Mister Ritchie, the Assistant General Manager at SFPUC, the earliest the SFPUC would declare a water supply emergency would likely be around January twenty-twenty-two. Such an action would be deemed appropriate by the SFPUC if dry conditions persist. Planning for planning purposes, Mister Ritchie stated that a mandatory ten to twenty percent water use reduction from twenty-twenty levels could be expected is if SFPUC declares an emergency drought situation later this year. Now, I'm going to talk about the SFPUC alternative water supply program. SFPUC is moving forward with identifying and evaluating alternative water supply projects that could be developed to ensure it meets its long-term water supply reliability obligations to its retail and wholesale customers. The effort is not related to the current drought, but there are some projects included in the list of projects that could possibly be accelerated for earlier implementation if necessary. The Alternative Water Supply Program was the subject of the upcoming SFPUC Public Workshop on September seventeenth from two to five. This was a virtual meeting and was open to the public, which I attended. It was broadcast at sfgovtv dot org. If the council member would like to have the link, I could send it to the City Clerk. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about, giving this significant drought, I would like to mention that in addition to the city of Brisbane's published stage one drought restrictions, the following resources are available to the public on BASCAL's website to support their water reduction efforts. One of them is indoor and outdoor water use reduction tips, information on rebates available to water customers, video library from our water efficient landscaping educational series. And I have the links. If you need further information, you could go to BASCAL dot org. I want to thank you for allowing me to make this presentation. And if you have any question, I'll be happy to answer. And I'm sure Mister Randy Bro, our city engineer, would accompany me in any questions that you might have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Seppi. And I'm sure we would like to get as many links as possible to help us all with this. Thanks.
I would be happy to do so.
Any questions from council for Seppi?
Yeah, I got a quick question, Madam Mayor. First of all, though, Seppi, thank you for the excellent, you know, presentation and, and, you know, still being part of, you know, community service in our town. So, thank you for your, your efforts. So, you know, the alternative water supply projects, and maybe Randy, you can, you chime in on this. What are some of the potential projects that they're looking to?
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to just stay quiet and let Randy respond to that. If you don't mind.
That was a question directed to Randy.
Yes, ma'am, I don't mind doing it at all. So, some of the alternative supply projects they've been looking at, they've actually already done a test study of an aquifer storage out on the west side of Daly City where the Daly City and SFPUC boundaries come together. And that's actually been quite successful. So what they do is when they have excess water available in the system, they fill those aquifers up. So that when we do have droughts and shortages, we can supply from there locally. We don't have to cut off the flow completely from Hetch Hetchy. One of the other things they continue to study is they are looking at a decel, excuse me, a desalination plant. Citing that is always a challenge. And they are also, of course, looking at a regional scale recycle water treatment.
Interesting. Okay, is it a regional scale? Would that be like a bi-county or multi-county? Situation?
Certainly multi-city and most likely it would be multi-county, yes.
All right, great.
They haven't got all the partners close together yet.
Got it. All right. Well, that's, that's encouraging to hear, you know, I mean, granted, rightly, water is is so scarce now and is only going to be so in the future. And it does make sense for us to look at water from a regional perspective. We know that there are some folks that have excess water and some that, that need water. And we should be looking at how do we, we help the region as a whole rather than just, you know, being in our little tribes. So I'm glad that that conversation is happening, Randy, and I'm glad that you and Seppi are part of that conversation. Thank you.
Any other questions? Colleen, Jerry, Madison? No. Um, I just have a comment. Randy, could we get that information even though it's sort of in, you know, the beginning stages regarding aquifer storage desalination? And, you know, water recycling, can we get some information out to the public about that? That just, just sort of stimulates the conversation and, you know, gets people understanding that we are actually doing something. Because I don't think most people would have a clue that those things are in progress.
Ma'am, I will reach out to SFPUC and see what information they have that they're comfortable sharing. I'm sure they've already got some public information.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions to Seppi or we can let her go?
Well, I, if I may add a couple of comments. I've been attending all the workshop that SFPUC has been putting particularly about what is the role of SFPUC? Now, the desalination, the recycling, and how they get water. In the last two days, instead of having the Hetch Hetchy tour that we would have physically, then in the last two days, they've had that meeting through Zoom, which was very, very productive. And I would be happy to send you the link that they gave a very good overview of where the water comes from, what did they do with it, what is happening with this Tuolumne River. I think it's really informative and I would love to send you the link as soon as I get them from Mister Ritchie.
Thank you, Seppi. Appreciate it.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor.
Okay, have a great evening.
I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
Moving on to item B in our presentations, we have a presentation from Len Maderman, who is the Chief Executive Officer of San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. That's a mouthful, Len. Good evening, CEO Maderman. Over to you.
Yes, hello, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. San Mateo County flood and sea level risers of the NC District is a mouthful. We refer to it and we encourage you to as one shoreline at this point, which kind of gets to the point that council member Lance was making about, about water having, not having boundaries and working together among jurisdictions related to water. That's definitely kind of the, you know, what our ethic is and, and the name one shoreline speaks to that. So I do have a presentation and I'll share my screen if that's okay and go through about a dozen slides and then be glad to answer questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you for, for inviting me to come to, to your city council. It's good to, good to connect with you and describe what we've been up to. Kind of first to lay the groundwork, remind members of the council that were here two years ago and members of the public that followed, has followed this issue for a while, San Mateo County. Well, stepping back even beyond San Mateo County, there's a lot of information out there about the changes for sea level. And as you may know, San Francisco Bay has been rising for over a hundred years. And over the past hundred twenty-five years, it's risen about one inch every fifteen years on average. And the mainstream kind of estimate out there, there's, there's different estimates from scientists about where sea level rise is going over the next fifty to a hundred years. But the mainstream ones predict instead of about one inch every fifteen years will be increasing about one inch every two years for the rest of the century. So it's quite a dramatic increase. And obviously, all of the information coming at us about not just sea level rise but drought, as we just talked about, as well as wildfires and hurricanes and whatnot, creates a lot of anxiety and, and getting to the point the mayor just made about letting people know what is happening. One of the main, one of the main activities that I do in presentations and getting out in the public as much as possible is to let people know that there is an agency focused on these issues, the water-related issues associated with climate change. And, and there are projects actually underway, including one under construction for that, for a new agency. So to, to give folks background on, on San Mateo County, as you may recall, if you were, if you were following this when the agency was created, San Mateo County is the most vulnerable county in California to the first three feet of sea level rise in terms of population, including underrepresented population, property value, homes, and contaminated sites. And we're up there nationally in terms of our exposure to sea level rise. The graph on the left is from a study the summer it came out of Stanford and, and it looked at the number of homes in each county that were exposed, vulnerable to sea level rise. And San Mateo County has the biggest bar, which means we have the most number of homes. But also ours is orange, which means that the median income of those homes is less than the median income of the county as a whole. The counties where the, where the bar is yellow, their median income is higher. So we have, have huge issues here. And back when the, when the agency was being developed in twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we were looking to see people in the county, leadership in the county, were looking to see what was out there that could work for this county. Can cities deal with this issue, this transformative issue? Can the county deal with it? And, and it was felt that that could not happen, that there are twelve cities on the bay, two on the Pacific coast side. All of them have issues related to this and, and we really needed to be working together and not in, as a jurisdiction by jurisdiction basis. There had been a county flood control district. The image on the right shows the areas where that district had purview and collected property taxes. And it was only ten percent of the county and ten percent of the bay shoreline and none of the Pacific coastline. And so that was pretty quickly understood to be insufficient to, to address this issue. This really transformative issue for our county. And it is transformative. We take an approach that's holistic in terms of the threats, not just traditional look at what storms are, a twenty-five-year storm, fifty-year storm, whatever, but more extreme storms in terms of what we may see in the future with the cycle between drought and more extreme weather. And then, of course, sea level rise. We take a holistic view to the geography. Most of our work, actually, right now, all of our work is multi-jurisdictional. It doesn't have to be that way, but those are the projects that seem to seek us out. And then a holistic view of the objectives, not just reducing the threats, but also turning what historically had been liabilities and in many cases walled off liabilities into assets that are integrated into the community, utilizing natural solutions when possible and public and private lands. So we were created in twenty nineteen through Assembly Bill eighty-five. We have startup funding from all twenty cities, including Brisbane, thank you, and the county. And our priorities for this fiscal year include what you see here, finish construction of our first construction project, which I'll mention to you a little bit, advance multi-jurisdictional projects that are new. And I'll talk about an example of that, work with cities and with developers so that projects are planned in the context of future climate conditions and regional protection efforts. I'll mention what that looks like and develop a long-term source of funding. We, as you may know, our board has a committee that's been working for quite some time on developing a countywide ballot measure. They haven't decided to move forward with it, but they've been doing a lot of exploring. It would look at both the water and wildfire potentially resilience needs in the county. And on the water side, it would address the four issues that were mentioned in our enabling legislation and in the documents that you all saw two years ago when, when others sought support from Brisbane, that being sea level rise, flooding, coastal erosion, and large-scale regional stormwater efforts. Here's this overview of much of the county and some of the projects that we're involved with. The ones in blue are the ones where we're the lead agency on. The Bayfront Canal and Atherton Channel Project is down in Menlo Park in Redwood City. That's under construction right now. And, and it's, it's a project that has been in planning since two thousand nine. It was handed us once we were established in twenty twenty. We completed the secret documents, we got the permits, we put together the funding, and we did the land acquisition in about a fifteen-month period and we started construction in May. And construction will be completed in January. We're looking at Redwood Shores, which is Redwood City, St. Carlos, Belmont, and County area, Burlingame and Milbrae connected to San Francisco Airport, and we have a countywide flood early warning system. Other projects shown on this map are ones where we're partners or potential partners and we anticipate connecting in our work to San Francisco's work to protect their shoreline as well as Foster Cities' work on its shoreline. Here's a kind of an overview, for example, of what the regional project looks like at San Francisco Airport area. San Francisco Airport has a project, as, as you may be aware, they've been working on it for years to, to protect their shoreline. The area along Highway one oh one is this light blue dash line and, and it need, need protection from sea level rise like the areas fronting the bay. But they wouldn't need to do this blue dash line if they connect in on these yellow dash lines to Milbrae on the south and crossing San Bruno Creek to San Francisco in the north. And so at the same time that San Francisco is pursuing this, Burlingame is looking at air sea level rise vulnerability. They completed a report in December of twenty nineteen and Milbrae in twenty twenty completed a report similarly. And so with, with one shoreline being created in twenty twenty, we kind of realized and they realized that it doesn't make sense for these cities to be working independently and independently of SFO, that it makes sense to work together. So they all agreed with us that, that one shoreline would be a lead agency on a project to connect to the airport and the pink line represents, in this image, represents the, the bay levee or other pub, infrastructure that would be built. The yellow lines indicate the creeks that are influenced by current daily high tides and also, of course, would be influenced with sea level rise. The, the, the project involves sharing of information, starting with establishing common objectives and sharing technical information, sharing environmental mitigations, sharing costs, and sharing land rights. So it's a very large project. We, we applied for a grant which the state has recommended we receive, so we'll probably be receiving that. And also, just today, Governor Newsom signed the budget and that includes money dedicated to one shoreline in part for this project. So, so this, this will be moving forward. In terms of development, and I know that, that your city has a, has a major development project that's been, you've all been working on for quite a long time. And so I definitely wanted to include this. Cities now require that new development, development in the FEMA hundred-year flood zone be built above flood elevation. That's a pretty common thing. But not yet considered is the conditions brought by climate change. And my perspective is that's a lost opportunity to both incorporate protection into the planning of that new development, but also to bring developers into the project to protect themselves, their property and their neighbors, and in fact, the public infrastructure that's associated with the development. So we've been working on zoning, specific zoning language, working with the city of Burlingame to include future conditions for climate change into their zoning. In fact, their city council discussed that at a meeting four to three days ago on Monday night and, and gave direction to, for the planning commission to take that up and include that in new zoning provisions. So we're working closely with Burlingame on that. We're working with South San Francisco on their general plans. We're working with the city of Redwood City on their specific plans. And we'd love to work with Brisbane as you're looking at the specific plan associated with your baylands. In part because of, so that Brisbane's protection aligns with its neighbors. And, and also because we're, one of the things that we're doing and supposed to be doing is providing a level of technical expertise on these issues. And so we'd, we'd very much be interested in engaging with you on that. Here are just some images. This is the, the map of future conditions that we've been working on with the city of Burlingame. And it has different requirements for different areas of the shoreline, depending on what the FEMA maps say. And it also basically says anything in the area subject to sea level rise has to, has to accommodate these, these different requirements. We're also working with specific developers. This is an image of development in South San Francisco. And it's actually on both sides of Coleman Creek. And we've been working quite a bit with this developer about ways in which their development can utilize our land rights and, and build in ways that provide flood protection, but also enhance the creek and provide a more natural setting to a creek that was basically turned into concrete in previous decades. And, and so it's really a win-win for us and for the developer and the future residents of the area. And then finally, this is an image from a development here on the bay shoreline of this county. And it really is a, is a good illustration of if you don't think about sea level rise and, and this development was from only a few years ago, so it wouldn't have been completely off the table to think about it. But there's not a lot of options to protect this property with, with sea level rise because these front doors come right out onto the bay, which of course is an attraction. But what our point is, you want to be thinking about that in advance because we don't want to build a big wall right in front of this front door. Looking at Burlingame, this is the city's current FEMA one hundred-year flood plane. And the blue areas indicate areas that are in the one hundred-year flood plane and, and properties there. If they have a mortgage, they're required to pay flood insurance. The, we took a look at what is the sea level rise vulnerability in Brisbane specifically. And the areas in purple and the circles are the areas that would, that based on the current models would first see water as seas go up gradually. And so these are the areas that we probably want to think about in terms of vulnerability. Obviously, there, there is this project that I spoke of that, that you all have been working on for so long. And, and I would encourage you to kind of think about both of these images simultaneously as this project develops. And I know that in Measure JJ, there was a provision regarding sea level rise. And I absolutely applaud the, the staff and, and folks in Burlingame, that, sorry, in Brisbane that, that put this forward because it does say that it will protect the uses from the one hundred-year flood, including one hundred years of projected, projected sea level rise. And that's just great. I think the questions are, what is the assumption about a hundred years of, of sea level rise? What number is being used? And then what that, what does that look like? But it's excellent that, that that was included in your measure a few years back. Also, one of the things to point out with this, obviously, Highway one oh one is right along Brisbane and, and right along this development and And Caltrans, in December of last year, so about nine months ago, came out with a study of its vulnerabilities throughout the Bay Area. And and the image on the right shows their vulnerabilities in regard to major roadways. And and the area of Highway One Oh One along Brisbane is an area that that is one of their priority twos. And so I would encourage, we've been working with Caltrans leadership on these issues over the past six months, I'd say. And I would encourage, I would encourage you all, if you haven't talked about that, because that could be integrated into into the Baylands approaches, because Highway One Oh One is obviously frontage for for much of that property. Then finally, taking a look at what our assumptions are at One Shoreline about sea level rise. The daily high tide, this these all of these numbers are are relative to something called NAVD nineteen eighty-eight, which is simply the datum that everybody agrees that they'll use really around the country in terms of tides. So our daily high tide in the in the peninsula and San Mateo County bayside is basically between six and eight feet. The FEMA One Hundred Year is ten to eleven feet. So it's it's about three to four feet higher. And the FEMA One Hundred Year Plus Required Free Board is twelve to thirteen feet. And our objective is to go four feet beyond the FEMA One Hundred Year plus required free board to sixteen or seventeen feet. So relative to the FEMA number of One Hundred Year, it's six feet above. Relative to FEMA's requirement, it's four feet above. But relative to the high tide, which is a number I like to use, it's about ten feet above, because that's the number that people, I think most people are familiar with the concept of the daily high tide. They're not so much into like, what are the FEMA numbers? But it is a very aggressive standard, more so than than any other any other projects that are in the planning phase right now. And so what does this mean in terms of development is our approach is that to we should look at the future risks, not just today's risks. And and the goal there is to avoid the challenging and costly impact to retrofit protection after things are built. You remember that image I showed from down on the peninsula from Brisbane, where the building was built right up to the shoreline? That's what we want to avoid. We want we want the earliest planning possible to include this issue. And and we want to build a natural infrastructure, I said marshes, for their flood protection benefits. We're working with a team at UC Santa Cruz that's evaluating all the marshes and potential marshes along the bay shoreline of San Mateo County for their flood protection benefit. And we're going to use that information. And then, of course, building trails into the protection infrastructure as much as possible. And that concludes my presentation, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. I'd be glad to answer questions.
Len, what an excellent presentation. Sad but excellent. That we're at this point that, you know, that's kind of frightening numbers, and I hope everybody takes 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 heart with that. The the one thing I did hear from you is the word collaboration every time you opened your mouth. So that that gives me some hope, and it gives me some comfort that that you're doing such an amazing job getting this moving forward. So enough from me. Comments and questions from Council, please, for Len. Pauline, I know you've got something to say.
I I'm fairly stunned at the presentation, not that I didn't suspect what might be going on, but I I think it's really riveting and very sobering. I I I just, I don't even know where to begin. I'm glad to see that communities are collaborating along the bay. I know South San Francisco's historically had flood problems, so this is just going to magnify it. I've seen some of those maps online where going several decades down the road in this century, it's really grim looking. So I I would appreciate if this presentation would be, is this, can this be made available to the city? Like a like a PowerPoint, so we can do something with this again?
Absolutely. I I sent to your city clerk a PDF of it. I think that was more in case of technological issues than anything else. But she has that, and I could give it to her as a PowerPoint, which would include some of those animations. Absolutely.
That's all I have. I'm I'm just awestruck. Thank you very much for for doing this tonight.
Well, you know, if I could respond, Councilwoman, I, you know, I I appreciate the fact that that you, I don't know, are awestruck. I think I think what the the message I'd like to give is this is a huge issue for our county, but there's something we can do about it. And and if we if we set us set our minds towards in integrating the knowledge that we have into our planning, that that this is a, this is, we can become resilient to this now. And in fact, you know, as I looked at Brisbane's, this project of Baylands, and I looked at Brisbane's map, you all actually have a pretty good opportunity to to address for the vast majority of your shoreline, this issue through one specific plan, and that's a that's a gift. I mean, really. Whereas other cities, you know, they have multiple dozens of developers that are knocking at the door, and they have huge infrastructure issues associated with each of those, and they have, you know, different roadways and different, I mean, Redwood City is all over the map of this bay shore, of you know, this county, and they have a huge challenge. So I would I would encourage you to 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 kind of in just include this in the many issues that you're thinking about in terms of that development, because because in 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 one kind of in in one movement on that development, you can probably make some good headway here, and especially, as I mentioned, in working with Caltrans. So.
So do you have any idea infrastructure funding that may come down from DC? Any of this possibly do you believe will be funded into projects here? Because also, what you said about Highway One Oh One, a priority two level with Caltrans, what does that equate to in reality? How many down the road, because that that transportation corridor is key to everything, north, south, and us?
Yeah, I mean, I think I think Caltrans's adaptation report coming out so recently is super helpful. And and I spoke, the the Chair of my board is is Supervisor Dave Pine, and he and I met with the with the new District Four Director of Caltrans, who who runs the whole Bay Area, to talk about the intersection between their priorities and our priorities. And, you know, I'm I'm hopeful that that and I have experience working with Caltrans on major projects. Not not I didn't work for Caltrans, but but having them as a partner, and it's certainly possible. We have to be in this together. It has to be us with the city and cities going to Caltrans to say, okay, if you folks, if if you if you have a project programmed for Highway One Oh One in this area, let's integrate that some of these water-related issues with that project. That's how we worked it down farther down on the peninsula when I was working down there, a previous position. And if you don't have a project there, let's get it programmed in your queue for future funding. It's not going to happen soon, but the sooner it gets programmed, the sooner it's going to happen. And so, you know, we both collectively, the city, we the One Shoreline with with other cities that have the same issue, have to go together and and make that approach. So it's possible. The federal money, I don't have any crystal ball about about, you know, will we see any of that? You know, the 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 governor today signed this budget bill, I mentioned, and some of it, there is some money for us, which is great, One Shoreline. But there's also a lot of money for adaptation, and so generally speaking, and it's competitive. And I think that in one of the reasons that was articulated to you two years ago and the other city councils to create this agency was that we would be better positioned for for funding, for for competitive funding, if we're all in this together. And and so certainly with just the signature was today. So it will take months for the kind of that to shake out through the state agencies on how they're actually going to deal with that money over the next several years. But that's that's something we're going to work hard on. And we'd like to work with you on that. If if you've identified specific targeted areas with us, you know, we'd be glad to glad to go to the state with you and and seek some of that funding.
Thank you. Appreciate all you do, and and I'm I'm very glad that all the peninsula cities are are coordinating on this.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question from the member of the public.
And can we get through the city council first, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Cliff, Madison, Terry, any questions, comments?
I have some questions, Madam Mayor. So, hi, Len. Thank you for the presentation. Actually, I was like really excited listening to your presentation this evening, and and I felt optimistic, e- even though, right, there's this like the greatest challenge to to humanity, really to the world, i- is happening before us. But, you know, if we're going to make a change, we're going to make a difference, right? We gotta, we gotta do it locally. And if we partner together locally, then we stand the best chance of of making a difference. So you you're bored. You guys recently had a a workshop with northern San Mateo County cities. Didn't you?
Did, yes, September ninth.
Yeah, I apologize for not not being there. I mean, I I had a another obligation and I I really, really wanted to attend, because, you know, we we need to have representation, as you have mentioned. We have an incredible opportunity to work with the the owner of the daylands to and and with Caltrain and with Caltrans to to come up with a really smart strategy for a very large segment of the shoreline. So here here's the the two things that I I I want to see if I can get a little bit more information from you. So over the years, you know, I've been to conferences and and I'll talk with someone from Caltrans. And I say, look, I have folks in my community, they're concerned about sea level rise. And I tell them, well, you know, we should be working with Caltrans, because they're 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 what is in between the shore, the bay and this development. And every time I talk with someone from Caltrans, they didn't have a plan. And this is like, it was a it was a big head scratcher. It's like, well, what do you mean you don't have a plan? This is just, you know, just a few years ago. So you're saying that now they do have a a pretty robust plan to how they will protect the One Oh One and thus protect? They don't.
They don't.
They still don't have that.
From from my perspective, they do not. They they what they do have now that they didn't have ten months ago and and before that, was an understanding of what their vulnerabilities are. So they surveyed roadways, and I showed you a briefly a graphic of the roadway image. They surveyed large culverts, they surveyed small culverts under their infrastructure. And one and one other thing, I can't remember. They don't have a plan. They know they have a need. And so it's it's almost, it it's a good opportunity for us to come to them and say, okay, here's how here's how our needs and your needs should fit into a plan. And so, you know, but I don't have any confidence that 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 they have a plan.
Okay, all right. And then the other thing, right, talking about plans. So it it seems like you're you're pretty excited about Burlingame's planning, right, and now partnering with with Milbrae. And so, you know, I would love for you to to start to have those conversations with with our staff. You know, and then hopefully, there's a a subcommittee that makes sense to then start to you know, start to think of, okay, how do we become part of a a North County strategic plan in dealing with the sea level rise? Because, you know, water goes wherever, right? And so, but I I I think I think there are some some really good examples that you have suggested that that can provide a a roadmap for us, and then also to be part of the bus, you know, that we all drive together. So, yeah, you know, this is this is one of those things where, you know, it's really great having a presentation that's given to the full council, so that we can all take it in, and we can ask you the questions, and then give direction to staff, and then start to to move things along. You know, that that better prepare us to to make us more resilient in in dealing with this this crisis.
Well, we'd be we'd be glad. Thank you for that, those comments. You know, I think at this point, I I would say we would be glad to to sit down, maybe virtually, with, you know, with with whoever you you all decide, committee or staff or develop you and developer, whatever, to just the first thing I would I would want to do is get get an understanding of from from our perspective, here's the vulnerability, from your perspective, you know, what are the opportunities? And and at least have that conversation to understand if 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 it makes sense to have more conversations. I I there, I can't imagine it doesn't.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, Len.
Yeah.
That's it, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I muted myself. Madison, Terry, questions, comments, and thanks. No, hang on, I scrolled over. Is that a no from both of you?
I know how dire it is, but I have no questions for Len. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, Len, you you've got a you've got a new fan right here. So much, you're just seeing, just seeing those graphics. They they need to be in in everybody's face and now, and and thinking that Caltrans doesn't have any plans. Kind of frightening to me. So whatever we need to do to, you know, bounce this ball forward, thinking that the cities are willing to collaborate, but we don't have Caltrans with any kind of plan, this is not making sense to my brain right now. So whatever we can do to get together, all of us, and and make that ball end up in the same court, that would be wonderful. But thank you so much for your presentation tonight, and I'm sure we'll be knocking on your door real soon.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I you let me let me just say, I can't speak for Caltrans. I'm not aware of what they've done since December twenty twenty to produce a plan. But I think certainly, talking to them and asking them that question is a reasonable question. And and so I think, and given the fact that so much of your city fronts their primary asset on the peninsula, I think it's it's a good, it's a good conversation to have.
Yeah, well, you know, we see them in the King Tides, but not that we've had many King Tides of late. But when we have King Tides, that water is very close to the roadway, as is. And if there is water covering One Oh One between South San Francisco and San Francisco, I would us is I would assume that every single person in the county, in the county of San Francisco, is horrendously alarmed that that could happen in the next couple of years. You know, if you're talking about, you know, one inch of sea level rise every two years versus one inch of sea level rise every fifteen years, that is horrifying to know about. And so, anyway, enough of that. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Cunningham, I'm sorry, the member of a member of the public had a question.
Sure.
Prem Law asked, what issues would you anticipate were a desalination plant to be included in sea level rise mitigation? In other words, would there be any potential conflicts?
Conflicts? Is that is that right?
Yeah.
You know, I'm not, I'm not really seeing that. Maybe I'll just make a brief comment on on drought resilience, because I did touch on that very briefly, and it was the subject of your previous agenda item. And and the the way that 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 intersects potentially with our work is is there, as you know, the water treatment plants in this county are along the bayside or along the Pacific coast. It's they're gravity-fed, and so they have to be at the kind of endpoint of that process. And and those water treatment plants also provide opportunities for recycled water to be transported back into the communities for use in pot non-potable, you know, uses. So what we're looking at right now is where can we focus? Where we are thinking about focusing for the first phase, let's say, of our sea level rise-related work, where does that intersect with water treatment plants? And what can our projects do to facilitate the enabling of those plants and the building of purple pipe, so to speak, infrastructure to get water back to parks and school sites and golf courses and all these other non-potable uses? So so I'm not that familiar with desalination and and what's on the table for the Bay Area. We're more focused, I I all I'm more familiar with is is the existing water treatment plants and are the things that we can do that make sense as long as we're working right next to them and and in the in the properties next to them. So thank you.
Thank you. Were there any more questions?
I see no other hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Len, thank you very much. Okay, Len, thank you very much and have a great evening and we will see you soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward to item C. Uh, we have three proclamations tonight. The first proclamation we have is proclamation recognizing National Preparedness Month. Whereas during September, the U S Department of Homeland Security and the National Preparedness Month Coalition urge all Americans to take some simple steps to make their families better prepared for emergencies. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty, the South Bay fires of twenty twenty and the yearly thunderstorms in our county all will continue to have devastating effects on the people and the economy. And whereas the loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas these lifesaving procedures will be highlighted during the month of September as the North County Fire Authority, City Emergency Services, and other service organizations provide disaster preparedness information to Brisbane residents. And whereas the community should take steps to help them before a disaster strikes, including making a kit, having a plan, being informed, and getting involved. And whereas it is highly recommended that our citizens become involved by participating in earthquake preparedness classes and the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT program. And whereas the important safety information should be studied and observed throughout the year in order to reduce injuries, loss of life, and property damage in the event of a disaster. And now therefore, I Karen Cunningham, Mayor of the City of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty one as National Preparedness Month. And encourage all Brisbane residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to follow before, during, and after a disaster. To receive the proclamation, Deputy Fire Chief Sean Pavanagh is here tonight.
Yes, and thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I didn't know if you would like to do the second one now too and we can in uh speak at the end.
Okay, are are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, then hold tight, sir.
Thank you very much.
Our second proclamation is recognizing October three through nine twenty twenty one as Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Brisbane and the North County Fire Authority are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Brisbane. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires killed two thousand seven hundred and seventy people in the United States in two thousand and nineteen, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and thirty nine thousand five hundred home fires. And whereas the majority of U S fire deaths, the out of four, occur at home each year. And whereas the fire death rate for thousand homes fires reported to U S fire departments was fifteen percent higher in two thousand and nineteen than in nineteen eighty. And whereas Brisbane residents should identify places in their home where fires can stop and eliminate those hazards. And whereas working smoking alarms have the risk of dying in reported homes in park. And whereas Brisbane residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of their home. And whereas the Brisbane residents should listen for the sound of a smoke alarm and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. Whereas Brisbane's residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Brisbane's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Brisbane residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase safety in fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the twenty twenty one Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, helps people better understand the reasons smoke alarms may sound and allies can know how to effectively address each alarm. Therefore, I Karen Cunningham, Mayor of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim October three through nine twenty twenty one as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all people in in Brisbane to be aware of the surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the North County Fire Authority and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week twenty twenty one. To receive the proclamation, um, for this also is Deputy Fire Chief Sean Pavanagh. And I'll now turn to.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor and uh and council members on behalf of North County Fire Authority and your Brisbane firefighters. Uh, we appreciate you guys recognizing not only the September National Preparedness Month, but also the first week in October, which is the uh Fire Prevention Week. And it's important to have those conversations um in the communities and also with your family members. And that's, that's what the, that's what the theme of the National Preparedness Month is for September. And then, as you stated in the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week and the first week in October, the theme this year uh nationally is the sounds of, like you said, the sounds of uh of uh safety, which are your smoke detectors and also your detectors for your carbon monoxide. Um, so it's always, it's always good to have these. It's always bringing awareness is what is what the proclamations are for um in in the communities that we serve and not only from um the public, but also from our public entities and the private entities. It's important to to have these conversations, just bring awareness to it. So once again, from all of us, we really do appreciate you, you guys having the proclamations for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Sean Pavanagh, for being here this evening. Thanks so much. Moving on to item E, which is our third proclamation, a proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month. Proclamation is here. Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. By celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Whereas the day of September fifteenth is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence from Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independent states on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. Whereas Hispanic refers to a person who is from or descendant of someone who is from a Spanish speaking country. And Latino, Latina, or Latinx refers to a person who is from a descendant or descendant of someone who is from a country in Latin America. Whereas we celebrate the countless contributions of Hispanics and Latinx Americans to our culture and community. Hispanics and Latinx Americans are the second largest minority group in our city. And generations of Hispanics and Latinx Americans have consistently helped make it strong and prosperous. Whereas we recognize that when we lift up Hispanic and Latinx American community, we strengthen our city. When we create more ladders of opportunity and built community, we provide the chance for all citizens to reach the greatest prevention. Now therefore, the year was old, but the City of Brisbane hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month, recognizing all Hispanic and Latinx American residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make the City of Brisbane a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. Police Chief LaCia and Finance Director Caroline would would like to say a few words. Welcome to you both.
Thank you, Mayor Cunningham and council members for this proclamation and for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. A little bit about myself, uh, I've been with the city for thirty two years. Both my parents were born in Mexico. Uh, my parents came to the United States in nineteen forty four in search of a better life, but not without facing various obstacles such as the inability to speak or um to speak or understand English and experience some discrimination when looking for housing due to their race. It was through their faith and devotion for their family that they found strength to stick it out and stay. Uh, my father found employment working for the Southern Pacific Railroad right across the Bay Shore of Lower um and soon they found home in Brisbane, raising their four family, their four children here. I was born and raised in Brisbane and was fortunate enough to stay and raise my own family here in this wonderful community that I still call my home. So I thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members for recognizing the culture, contributions, and achievements that Hispanics have made to American society. This would not be possible without the sacrifices that our ancestors endured to pick, to pave the path uh for the future generations. And I am very honored and proud to receive this proclamation as a representative of our Hispanic community. Thank you, and I'll pass it on to Carolina Ewen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Cunningham, council members, and City of Brisbane for issuing this proclamation today. My name is Carolina Ewen, Finance Director for the city and was hired in two thousand fifteen. Thank you for allowing me to reflect the many Hispanics working within city limits. A little of my background, although I was born here, my parents and five siblings immigrated to San Francisco from Central America. My parents taught us to love and respect this country because of the many freedoms and opportunities available to us. But they were very intentional to make sure that we didn't forget our home country, to recall and honor our culture, including the Spanish language celebrations, typical dishes, and the arts. They also encouraged us to help others from our community to not be fearful of local government, but be engaged in community, community service and with civic responsibilities. By the city issuing this proclamation, it informs us that the Hispanic community's heritage is welcomed in Brisbane, acknowledged, and encouraged. Those living here or like myself who work here can feel confident to engage with the city with an expectation of mutual respect and even celebration that we can be united in our diversity. Thank you tonight.
Thank you, Lisa, thank you, Caroline. It's really nice to hear from you both. Okay, moving on to item five, our communications. Number one, Ingrid, is there anybody in our audience who would like to speak? Not on our end.
Um, we did receive a correspondence from Anya Miller to the City Council. This is a request that item L be removed for discussion for the consent calendar and to that the council direct better technical supervision of Zoom meetings. For instance, at last Planning Commission meeting, the chair was inaudible for much of the time and the city clerk's instructions to the audience are often read so fast as to be unintelligible. The public is prevented from attending in person but deserves consideration. Anya Miller.
Thank you. Anything else?
If there are members of the public wishing to speak, kindly raise your hand. Provide email or text. I see no further hands or comments, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Ingrid. Moving on to item six, which is the consent calendar items F through L. Can I get a first and second to adopt consent calendar items F through L?
Um, as as a point of reference, Madam Mayor, do we need to remove item L because a request was made by the public?
You do not.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, I would like to approve item F through L.
What second?
Yeah, you know, um, I know it was requested. I I I I can go either way if there wants to be like a quick staff report if that's the council's pleasure. If not, I I'm I'm okay approving the consent or making the motion to do the second.
Um, out of respect, I think we should just have a quick staff report about the importance of um having the option to remain virtual. So I would make a motion for consent calendar items F through K. And then we can clear up.
I will, I will remove my my motion.
Okay.
All right, second down.
Thank you. Roll call vote on uh consent, approving consent calendar items F through K, and then we can have a discussion on item L. What's the fourth vote about this?
You want to do an or the the roll call for for that motion? Um, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye, thank you. Um, discussion on item L, please. Do you have a stock of what happened at that meeting? Or if it's been resolved or how are we going to do this meeting?
Madam Mayor, I'm certainly willing to respond to that. I I don't believe the question that was asked is relevant to item L. Um, but in terms of the question with regards to the Planning Commission um meeting, um, we do monitor those and there was not a problem around the channel itself. Um, so we do uh make sure that those things, those meetings are um available um in a audible way for the for the uh public. And we'll continue to look at that. Um, we can reach out to see whatever was happening with the uh particular uh individual and see if there's an issue that we can help her with. Um, but again, I don't think it's really relevant to item L.
So we did not get any uh other complaints from any other members of the public?
We received no other complaints.
So this could have been a personal issue at the um residents um or where they were during the meeting?
Perhaps, I mean, I don't want to speak to that, but that that's that's possible.
Good things. Um, comments on on second, Madison?
Um, it well, in discussing and staying on the topic of item L, um, based on what I read in the staff report, we're authorized to continue um meeting virtually until January twenty twenty four in light of the pandemic and which we as a council feel is the safest thing for council, for staff, and for the public. Um, so we are, you know, abiding by what we have, the the privileges that we have been granted. Um, and I think, you know, there's probably a provision in the future to have some type of hybrid if people feel comfortable coming in person. But for now, ultimately, we have to take everyone's safety into concern first and foremost. Um, and at this point, it's not safe.
And this resolution.
Twenty two, right? Not twenty two.
This resolution will come back to you on a monthly basis because that's the uh unique way in which the state legislature, I guess, chose to deal with this.
There there's, if I may, there's, there might be a little confusion. So when the governor extended the existing rules that we've been operating under since February of nineteen uh of twenty twenty, um, he extended them until September thirty. The legislature took an action that took effect last week because it was an emergency matter and the governor signed it. Um, that caused a little confusion about which which would govern. The governor has issued an executive order subsequently that I don't think we had time to reference in the staff report. I don't know, Ingrid, if we were able to amend it or not. We weren't.
No.
The, so the governor, recognizing the inconsistency or or possible inconsistency, issued an executive order saying that the new law would take effect October one. So we're under the old rules. We've been following the old rules. The meeting continues to follow the old rules. Uh, as of October one, um, Councilmember Davis, the point you made about possible hybrid meetings, et cetera, is permitted under the new law. And uh that's, that will be in the council's uh judgment as as things play out in the future.
We just have to continue having like a state of emergency in order to we continue have to, we can, we have to continue to declare a state of emergency in order to be able to exercise the right to have virtual meetings, correct?
Uh, a state of emergency accompanied by advice that social distancing is appropriate. And then it will be, as as Sam Uger said, uh, it will be a requirement that you revisit it every thirty days. Do you still find a need? Um, and and one last question, just because I uh had a question from the public about a week ago. The public health officer at the local level can make the determination as well on the social distancing. It's not simply uh the state, the state uh public health officials. public health officials.
Cliff, you, you called this one first. You have something else to say. I'm sorry, Madison, you done?
Everything was said, Madam Mayor. So thank you for the clarification, Tom.
Okay, Colleen or Terry, any further comment?
I just wanted to say that we just got something in the chat that was a comment from the public that may need to be addressed if we want to be compliant regarding closed captioning.
I see that. Tom, do you see that?
Yeah, I do. This is one of the questions that has to be addressed there. To be blunt, there's a view that it has been addressed by public order and it's not further required. But I absolutely understand the, the comment, and that is something that's being looked at.
Thank you. Terry, Colleen, any other comments on item L?
No.
Colleen, I can't see.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, I make a motion to approve consent calendar item L as written.
You need it or you're making it, Karen?
I need it.
Okay, I will make the emotion to approve item L.
Second.
Thanks. Roll call vote please on item L.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye. Thank you everybody. Moving on to item seven, new business. Item M is consider approval of 25 Park Place lease agreement. Stock report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city has an opportunity to lease space directly across the street from our existing city hall at 25 Park Place. It's about a 10,000 square foot building. We have an opportunity to lease it as of January 1st of 2022. The approximate cost is $25,000 a month for $2.50, and that's the starting fee. Does go up over time. We are also in the process, as the council is aware, and the members of the public may not be as, as aware, we've been working with the North County Fire Authority Management Staff to relocate them here to Brisbane so that their office space that's over in Daly City can be repurposed into a training facility for the firefighters in the North County, the three cities. This is a cooperative effort, as you know, with our two other neighboring cities up here that I think serves all three communities very well. This is, as I indicated, a unique opportunity since it's given its proximity to, to the existing city hall. We also have a clause in there that gives us a first opportunity to purchase the building if it goes on sale in the future. As you also recall, measure JJ required that the, as the development of the Baylands plays out, that they are responsible for additional costs to operate the city based on their development, the increased population, the increased commercial space. So over time, we will be expanding as, as a city. I mean, we, I don't expect the city employee count to double in size, even though we're doubling as a community because I think some things can be economized. But certainly, we're going to grow significantly over time, and that could be obviously over a very long period of time. So this will give us an opportunity to grow in that area. Frankly, we've been in this building for, I think, over 20 years, over 25 years. We did a major remodel about 15 years ago, and we are pretty much at the maximum returns of space here at, at, at city hall. So we will be looking at some different options over the next few months in terms of existing employees as well as the North County Fire Authority. But I think this will give us a good flow between the two buildings, and will give the public a good place to be able to come and do business. There is ample parking at the new building or the building across the street. So the combination of those two with the, with the parking here at city hall, I think will also be good for the, for the community access to the building, buildings. With that said, if there's any questions I can answer, any questions, this, we are asking you to approve the lease tonight, and then we will go forward with an execution date of January 1st.
Thank you, Colleen. Any council questions?
So we did hear this issue, Colleen and I in our subcommittee. So, you know, I don't have any questions on it. I do think that it's a a good opportunity for a building close to the existing city hall and that it will reduce some of the necessary movement of employees and interactions would be easier in a building that close. So I don't have any questions for staff, and I would recommend it to the council.
Thank you. Madison?
We're going to need to expand, I think, you know, pretty soon here, so it makes sense to find a a building that's as close as possible to existing city hall. So I think that it's a smart move. And I think it's a landlord that we have longstanding, you know, familiarity with. So that is a good sign to me.
Colleen, you got any questions?
No, I would just echo what Terry said about our subcommittee meeting, and we went more in depth of how the spaces would be used and I, I would just mention that we talked about administrative staff going in one building and giving plenty of room for community development in the other, and it, it's just the growing pains. We really are going to need the space. It's, it's a good idea at this time. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this, Ingrid?
I see no written correspondence at this time, Madam Mayor, and I see no hands.
Make a motion to approve item N, M, to send 25 Park Place lease agreement?
Just before we do, I just want to say, I think, you know, for the benefit of the community, having a building so close to the existing building is going to be so much easier for staff, number one, but if there's a citizen that needs to go to multiple departments, they just walk across the street rather than having a building located somewhere else. So I think this is a unique opportunity that we would not get again. So, back to your motion, Madison.
Oh, and in saying that, a big kudos to Mitch Bull. I know he worked really hard in, you know, putting this together, and I think that we should recognize him for all that, the effort he did in putting this deal together. So thank you, Mitch. So with that, my motion stands. I don't know if there's a second.
I'd be happy to second that.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to item N, consider introduction of ordinance 663, adding chapter 8.25, mandatory organic waste disposal reduction to the Brisbane Municipal Code. Stock report, please.
Well, Mayor, remember, ten council members, good evening. So yes, and I recognize this is a really lengthy staff report, and it's a 30 something page ordinance on there. And I also recognize, though, that for the members of the infrastructure and franchise subcommittee, this is the third time you've seen this topic. The rest of the council has already seen this twice. We'll recall back in June that I didn't bring the ordinance to you, but I did bring the entire PowerPoint from Cal Recycle that's attached to the back of that, and I offered to make myself available during your summer break because I thought you would like to do nothing more than talk to me about trash. But not having heard any questions, what I'm assuming is that council understands that really the purpose of this ordinance is to ensure that we're in compliance with state law. But perhaps for the benefit of the public, I could go through and explain what this is, and I'll, I'll try and keep it a little bit brief, and I'll try and stick to the points. So what we are trying to do here is to become in compliance with a series of bills that have been passed by your legislature, this California legislature, that together encompass what we refer to as the state organics law. And really, those of us who are practitioners here often refer to it kind of under the umbrella of SB 1383, which was passed in 2016. And the title of that act was the Short-lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Act. And that's, doesn't flow off the tongue very easily, but it's the climate pollutant piece of it that we're really looking after because what all of this is trying to do together is to reduce the production of methane. And the reason we want to do that is because methane is an incredibly strong greenhouse gas. In fact, it's 72 times more powerful than CO2. And 21% of the state's production of methane comes from our landfills. And it's coming from our landfills because we're putting organics in there, and they are just naturally degrading over time. That's what organics do. They degrade, but they happen to produce methane. So, so many of these requirements in here are reducing the amount of methane by reducing how much organics goes into our landfill. And there's really five big things that this ordinance and the following one, the one after this are going to do. Number one, our solid waste franchisees are going to have to provide organic collection to all residences and businesses. So that's the green barrel. So that's where you can put grass, you can put your food scraps, you can put soil papers in. The good news is scavengers already make that available. They're happy to keep doing it. They're happy to expand that all business. The next thing we have to do is we have to participate in an edible food recovery program. What that means is that when you have large venues, restaurants, and you have groceries and such, where they have food that is still edible and that can be passed along, it has to be recovered rather than just randomly throwing it out because, well, that's the easy way to do it. The good news there is that the county is taking on that role, and a section of the ordinance that's before you on this item is really in there and written exactly so that San Mateo County and their Office of Sustainability can do that program for us within the city. The third thing we're going to do is conduct education and outreach. The city does that, again, in conjunction with our solid waste franchisees, primarily scavengers. We do have a third zone right now, but that other franchisee really only has six customers there, so that's why I keep focusing on South San Francisco scavengers. In the next ordinance that you'll see, there's going to be a requirement to procure recyclable and recovered organic products. So again, to make sure that we're making the maximum use of these organic products and not just throwing them into the trash because it's easy. And the last thing we have to do is monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. That's really the one sort of interesting part, if you will. I believe council is probably aware that we already have a trash container management policy, and the focus of that policy that went into effect a couple of years ago was really to make sure that we have lids that are fully closed, and we have lids that can handle our terrain. And the reason we were doing that is because with our narrow, steep streets and with our proximity to the mountain, we have two issues here. The cans get knocked over in the wind, and the raccoons and the crows love to get in them. So that's how we started that management policy. But as we go forward and as we're trying to ensure that these three trash cans, where you have your recyclables, your organics, and then your household trash, it really is just trash, we're, we're going to have to do what we call lid flipping. So we're going to have to go through on a specified percentage of these on different routes and make sure that people are putting the right product in the right can. And I'm sure you could imagine how much fun that's going to be because it's already difficult now, oftentimes, when you sit in front of an array of trash cans, right? So that's going to be the hardest part of this. The good news is that for at least the first year, what we're going to be doing is we're just going to be educating people. We're going to be outreach. And we're going to, you know, we're passing a note along, hey, we, we went into your trash can and we found that you had a soda can in the trash. It doesn't, soda can doesn't go in the trash. Oh, we noticed that you had a pizza box in the trash. The pizza box doesn't go in the trash. The pizza box goes in the organic. So that's what we'll be doing. And then I would imagine that some people might wonder, well, is this going to cost me more? Is this going to impact my, my, my solid waste bill? I think a little bit. And the reason is we haven't could finished, we haven't really started our negotiations yet with our franchisees because the piece that's going to cost them more time and resources is that they're going to have to be the ones that goes out and flip those minutes, right? Because they're going to have to look at the trash can before the truck picks them up and do that reporting back and forth. So that will either slow down their efficiency or it will require perhaps a different amount of personnel. But that's something that we'll negotiate as we make changes to the franchise. So with that, I'd be happy to take questions from any members of the council, the public, as we'd see fit, ma'am.
Okay. I have questions, but what about everybody else? Terry, Madison?
I have no questions. I've heard about this in our franchise in our subcommittees, so I'm pretty familiar with it. I think it's going to be mostly about educating the public on what goes where and who takes what.
Right. Madison? Well, Colleen?
I, I would just say, I think the key on this, you just saw the, the presentation earlier on sea level rise, methane gas. For everyone that, that is going to be upset that the bill might go up or that it's getting complicated. It's, it's all about sea level rise and climate change. It's very important. Please take it seriously. It's really important. Thank you.
Thank you for highlighting that, ma'am.
Yeah, Cliff?
Yeah, yeah, you know, thank you, Randy, for the presentation and yeah, echoing what you're saying, Colleen. Yeah, we all contribute a little bit, right? And it makes a huge difference, and we, and we have to do it. You know, we've been just kind of just throwing out our garbage and not thinking twice about it for way too long. And yeah, we owe it to ourselves and our future generations. So, thank you.
So, Randy, I have two questions. One is, years ago, I'm not on the, no, years ago, you know, there were many, many organizations who wanted to collect the extra food that was left at restaurants every, every night. And basically, the excuse that was given why they couldn't do that was, you know, the, the cities didn't want the responsibility of people taking food from restaurants to, to other people in the community and potentially making them ill. I never bought that answer for one second, but it looks like we've suddenly overcome that. Is that correct?
We absolutely have overcome that, ma'am. And, yeah, you know, and, and going back, I sort of understand some of the initial reluctance to that because even if you try and open a restaurant now, or if you try and open a kitchen surfing your home, you've got to go through safe food handling certifications and make sure that all of your employees do that. So that's a very, it's a very valid concern. I was just on an emergency services call this morning, and we were dealing, talking with some of the people that did the large animal evacuation out of the Keldor group, and one of the issues that came up there was that people had made sandwiches for these ham sandwiches for the folks, and they left them out all day. And they were out in the hot sun, and somebody ate one and became ill. So it's a very serious matter, but we've got the matter worked out. The, the Office of Sustainability on San Mateo County is already operating an edible food recovery program. The person they've got in charge of it knows what he is doing. He knows what requirements he has to impose upon people. He knows how to make sure they're in compliance. I, I feel that we are really there. We're really at the point where we can have a successful program and have edible food that doesn't go to waste.
Right. And my second question is, what about compost bins for homes? Now, obviously, you know, there's a certain percentage of homes who could do it. We've had a barrel, a rolling barrel, completely closed compost bin that nobody's gotten into in the last four years. None of those crows or fisker raccoons who tried can get into this particular barrel. What about that? I mean, because of the kind of food that gets eaten in this house, 100% of our food waste is compostable. So, you know, I'm sorry, almost 100%. Nothing that's got oil on it can go into a compost bin, but that is about the only thing that can. Can we, can we add that to the picture? Because if we can have, I don't know, even 10% or 20% of homes that have the space for a, a closed barrel system for composting, that, that's hopeful too, and I haven't heard that in any of conversations yet.
So, so I'll offer two thoughts on that, ma'am. Obviously, I think composting is brilliant. I grew up with a family, that's what we did. We had a small plot, and that's where we grew our vegetables and such, and my wife's family grew up the same way. But I think if you're going to be, we'll call that term a self-hauler, somebody that takes their, takes their own organic waste and uses it in a particular way that makes sense. That's, that's a really good idea if you're going to use it on site. The next ordinance that you're going to look at does have very specific requirements about using compost, but there are also very specific requirements about how that compost has to be produced. So I don't think the average single-family household could produce compost to the level that the state's going to require. But most certainly, if they've got their own gardens there, and they, I, I would be shocked to find out that if somebody has a reasonably sized garden, they're not doing some composting on their own because that ends up being some of the best fertilizer that you can use. I'm sure you're well aware.
Absolutely. Worm farms for all. Thank you. Okay, is there any public comment? Oh, anybody else have any more questions, Carolina? If not, we have public comment?
We did have a public comment that came in.
Yeah, we have a, we have a question in the chat. On the last bill, my garbage bill had been increased by 15.36%. Will it be raised again? That doesn't seem right, and that's from Prem Law.
So that last rate was directly in compliance with the franchise agreement that we have with South San Francisco.
So that last rate was directly in compliance with the franchise agreement that we have with South San Francisco. That agreement specifies that there is a cost of living for X number of years. And then I believe it's, I don't have the agreement in front of me. It's either every three or every five years that South San Francisco scavengers gets to go out and they do a comparison chart of what the rates are at the other agencies. And then they come to the median of that. So that's how that was done. It didn't have anything to do with adding new agreements to it. It's just our existing franchise. And I believe we actually, I don't believe, I know because I was the one who did it. We brought that rate increase to council and I'd have to find it, but if Prem wanted it, he can, he can just ask Ingrid for it. We'll be happy to get that to him so he can see how it was done.
You got any other public comments?
And Mayor, I haven't received any written correspondences, text or any, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a, I have a comment.
Wow, go ahead, please.
Um, so speaking of like recycling or finding a home for food, um, there's an app called Too Good To Go. And basically restaurants and grocery stores sign up to participate. And each, and donut shops and things like that, and each night or each day, they post like on there if they have items that they need to sell that day. So for example, El Toro Taqueria, um, in the Mission, they're listed and their pickup time is between like seven and eight or seven thirty and eight thirty, like towards closing. That's the time that they know like what food that they'll have left over. And so I think it's like for five dollars or six dollars, you get like eighteen dollars worth of food or something. So basically it's at cost for the restaurant. Um, and from the reviews of people who've like written about the app, a lot of times the business gives you way more. People say that they've been able to like put, um, food in their fridge for a week and just using this app once or twice. And you don't know, you can't pick, you don't know what you're going to get. Um, the restaurant could even give you ingredients. Let's say they just have like a ton of sour cream. You might get that. Um, so it's kind of a surprise every time that you go. But it's a way to, um, you know, make sure that food doesn't end up in waste. Uh, and it's perfectly edible, great food. Um, so it's called Too Good To Go and extremely cheap meals, um, with very high value.
Madison, is that the number two or T double O?
T O O.
T O O, T O O, Good To Go. It's an ad.
Yeah. There's a lot of places in the city that are registered. Um, I think it's only serving San Francisco right now, but you can go on and you can do like the day before or the day of. It'll show you all the things that are available and then you can sign up. And they have different packages that range in price for how much food value you want to get. And then you just have to be at the restaurant or location during the window, like a specific window.
That's awesome.
That is.
What?
Have you tried it yourself?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I have the app. Um, but the windows haven't lined up with times that I've been available and it's like in the city. So it's, you have to make an effort to go, but I've read a bunch of reviews about like what people have gotten um, from these businesses and it is, people have gotten some great stuff. So, um, I think, I was telling my cousin who just moved here, who's a college student. I was like, you've got to use this because you're on a budget, but this is a way that you can eat for the whole week um, on just four dollars and you're getting really great food. So I haven't tried it myself, but I have the app and, um, I'm planning on, I'm planning on using it. I can tell you like, just for example, it's here, uh, there's Napper Tandies, oh, there's Pontoria. Um, and then they have like a bunch of produce markets, Buffalo Whole Food and Grain Company, um, Castro Coffee Company, Sisters Coffee Shop, Happy Donuts on Venice. So they have all different types of businesses, um, that you can show up and then they will give you stuff.
Yeah, no, I think that would be great. Um, you know, if staff can look, uh, you know, a little bit deeper into that app and see if we could put it on, uh, you know, the blast or, you know, the star.
Yeah, they have really popular, Senior Sistic is on here. So they have really popular establishments. Um, I think Daily Driver is on here too. So a lot of big name, um, San Francisco restaurants participate in this app.
A lot of people are thinking outside the box. That's great. So, um, any other discussion from council on this? I don't see.
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor, to introduce, um, ordinance number six, six, three, waiving first reading, adding chapter eight point two, five, mandatory organic waste disposal reduction through the Brisbane Municipal Code.
And I will second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Hi.
Councilmember Lance?
Hi.
Councilmember Mackin?
Hi.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Hi.
And Mayor Cunningham?
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item O, consider introduction of ordinance six, six, four, adding chapters three, chapter three point one, three, recovered organic waste and recycled content paper procurement policy to the Brisbane Municipal Code. Staff report, please.
Yes, ma'am. So I am back again with another item on this and I have good news and I have bad news for you. Uh, the bad news is that there's a lot more work to do to be fully in compliance with state organic law. The good news is that this is the last item that you folks are going to have to do. The rest of it's going to be on staff. So once we get past this ordinance, you'll be done for the year on this. Uh, I really like the title of this ordinance because it really tells us what it is. It's Recovered Organic Waste and Recycled Content Paper Procurement Policy. That's all this is. This is a procurement policy and that's why it's being added to Title III of the municipal code. Because that's where our existing procurement policy is. And this is just going to be a new chapter underneath it. And there's two things that it's talking about. One is specifying that all of the cities and the counties have to procure a specified amount of organic product, right? So organic products, so it doesn't go to waste. A lot of people, and I think you're going to hear from a lot of your colleagues, uh, most people are basing that on purchasing mulch. There's a huge conversation, there's much consternation as to whether there's going to be enough mulch available. And even if the cities could procure it, do they have a place to store it and they have a place to put it? We very luckily are not going to have that problem. And the reason we don't have that problem again is because our franchisee is incredibly progressive. Years ago, South San Francisco put in a treatment plant so they convert organic waste into recycled natural gas. And one of the organic products that a city is allowed to count towards its requirement is diesel gallon equivalents of recycled natural gas. And so we're going to meet our requirements from there. So it's absolutely fabulous. And I keep wanting to give kudos to scavengers because I think they deserve it. The other thing that this ordinance requires is the procurement of recycled paper. And it's got specific numbers and contents in it. The good news is we've already got that in our climate action plan. That's already been there. Our climate action plan and our purchasing policies already allow us to give ten percent or twenty percent credit for recycled products if they're slightly more expensive. So we can purchase those and make sure we are meeting the sustainability goals in our CAP. So this is one of those ordinances. It's going to cost you nothing. Basically, we're not changing anything we do, with the exception that the Sustainability Division within Public Works is going to be the record keeper of this. So Adrian will be somewhat busy working with the different department heads and making sure that people are procuring the materials they should be and keeping track of it so that we can report it annually. But as far as what the council and what the public will see, you will see business as usual. With that, I'm once again happy to take questions.
Other questions? No, I don't see any questions for you on this one, Randy. So, any public comment, Ingrid?
No chance.
No, you're muted.
Ingrid, you're on mute.
I see no raised hands, correspondences or text messages, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So unless, uh, council has any discussion, can I get a first and second to introduce ordinance six, six, four, adding chapter three point one, three, recovered organic waste and recycled content paper procurement policy to the Brisbane Municipal Code.
Make that motion. Oh, or I'll second hers.
Thank you. Okay, um, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Hi.
Councilmember Lance?
Hi.
Councilmember Mackin?
Hi.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Hi.
Mayor Cunningham?
Hi, thanks again. Uh, moving on to item P, consider creation of a Brisbane Equity and Diversity Committee and Brisbane one oh one, a Brisbane Civic Engagement Session. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Cunningham and members of the council. On June twenty twenty, the city manager created Equity Plus Inclusion Committee, or EPC, which is comprised of staff members from different departments to help keep the organization focused on equity, inclusion and diversity issues. The committee focuses on areas such as recruitment and retention, internal and external communication and diversity awareness. A few members of EPC worked with the city council liaison to research on how other cities in the state and throughout the county have formed their own community diversity and equity committees. On August twenty twenty one, the city council liaison met with staff to discuss what was deemed to be common components of Equity and Inclusion Committee that would be beneficial in creation, in the creation of our own Equity and Diversity Committee. The city council liaison reviewed the information with staff and we are now making the following recommendation with city council support for the creation of our own committee. The committee's main purpose would be to be the ambassador for the city to provide insight and feedback to city council on diversity and inclusion related issues, which is similar to the inception of Open Space and Ecology Committee, where OSAC took on the role of providing the city feedback on open space and sustainability related issues. The name of the committee would be IDEA, which is, which stands for Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Accountability. This will enable the committee to address a full range of issues pertaining to underrepresented groups. The size would be seven to eleven, which is not too small or too big to ensure full participation from all members and also capture a full range of representation. The members can be selected by council appointment, where the eligibility is extended not only to residents, but also to people who work in Brisbane. As part of the application process, the subcommittee recommends asking the applicants the question, what diverse perspective will you bring to the committee? As it will provide insight on how each applicant define their own identity and allow the city, that the city council a broad ability to have a committee with diverse opinions and background representation. The committee thinks the new committee should meet monthly, which is similar to all our existing committees, and allow members to determine the best day and time to meet as preset or a traditional day and time may limit some people to be able to serve the committee. And now I will hand it over to Ingrid to present the Proposed Leadership Academy.
Honorable Mayor and council members. Ingrid Padilla, City Clerk, a co-coordinator of the Equity Plus Inclusion Committee. I'm here to share with you three more, um, diversity inclusion activities that are being proposed to the council. They include the following. One, the Proposed Leadership Academy. Epic also discussed the possibility of creating a leadership academy for the residents of Brisbane to help enlarge the pool of people willing to apply for commissions and committees. Second, a proposed learning event. The subcommittee reviewed the idea of creating a learning event with the goal of reaching out to underrepresented members of our community to assist them in learning about the community and how the city and committees function. Staff recommends the following program to achieve this. A half day session on Saturday, tentatively November sixth, called Brisbane one oh one. The session would be planned at Mission Blue, so if needed, it could be held outside or inside. And participants would need to, would need to apply by October twenty second and it would be open to residents only. There would be a maximum of twenty participants to ensure robust, robust discussion and allow people to get to know each other. So the program would focus on the city council's adopted goals. It will have, um, topics that would be reflective of issues the city is working on, on those areas. And the sessions would last from thirty to forty minutes each. The program would begin with a welcome from the mayor, an icebreaker and an overview of the city by the city manager. Staff anticipates us to start around nine forty-five, um, to two thirty and then lunch, coffee and pastries would be provided. Uh, lastly, the subcommittee also proposes, uh, listening event. Uh, it's going to be a citywide listening event to begin the conversations around the issues of diversity, equity, inclusion and accountability. And the subcommittee recommends, uh, recommended a citywide event in hopes that the full diversity of our community is represented. And we hope we'll, we'll bring in an outside facilitator for such an event. The cost of the developer's succession is not anticipated to be too great. So there, there would be a limited number of about twenty people participating. And the cost of the new committee would depend on what issues they would like to discuss and how much staff time is needed. That's it for us.
Great. Other questions?
Well, if, if I may, Madam Mayor, um, yeah, Mabson and I have, uh, you know, met with, uh, the, 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 the folks at City Hall who have been organizing this and, and putting things in motion. And, um, it, it has been, it's been wonderful to, to, to work with all of you because you're so excited about doing this. And, and it is such an important, um, you know, piece of helping to bring the community together. And, and those things don't happen unless people get active and people get passionate about it. And, and all of you have that. And, um, I, I'm so glad that you're, you know, wanting us to, to move this forward. Um, so many people sometimes, you know, just don't think that there are any issues because they're kind of in their own thing. And, um, but there, there are. And, um, folks like yourself put that out there so that we can all be educated and, uh, and have awareness of, of, of what's going on with, with other, uh, members of our community. So I think this is great and I, I absolutely love the name idea, you know, is, is a few thumbs up. So it's a great job.
Hey, um, anybody else, Colleen? Uh, Colleen, you just muted yourself.
I'm very good at that.
Well, there you go.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate the work that the Epic Committee has done on this. Um, my, I, I like the events you're talking about. I hope your Mission Blue idea is safe and people are vaccinated or I'm a little leery about that being indoors. Um, the proposed learning event is interesting. I think that it's always been hard, I, I've worked just on my own to try to always recruit people for our committees and commissions. And it's hard where, where people haven't been involved or they feel marginalized. And it's been a tough thing to figure out how to change that. Um, I wondered if you'd even thought of having this listening event before your learning event in that something I've discovered with people that end up on our city committees and commissions. They often meet each other in something very informal. And in that process, they get to know a couple of people that they may stay in contact with. And then it's kind of like a, a peer pressure or encouragement where one will encourage the other, well, you're good at this, you should do that. And that's kind of how we've managed to recruit people. So I would just, I, I'm not telling you what to do at all. I would just encourage you to think about ways. The, the discussions and the face-to-face time are really the most important of all. So I applaud everything you're doing. This is, this is really an, an important step for our community and a long time ago needed. Thank you so much for this.
Jerry, do you have anything to say?
No, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to say one thing. Um, when you said listening event, it really pricked my ears. Because I think in, in our world, if we all listened to each other, we might learn something, right? So that whole listening thing is like, you know, hearing where people come from, what their backgrounds, their food, communities, the things that are important. The list goes on and on and on. So I, I kind of echo what Colleen said. I think that listening event is super important. Anyway, with that being said, do I have, um, a first and second to create a Brisbane Equity and Diversity Committee and Brisbane one oh one, a Brisbane Civic Engagement Session?
I would enthusiastically make the motion for the creation of a Brisbane Equity and Diversity Committee.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
And I just wanted to note that there are no written correspondences or public comment at this time. So we have, um, councilmember Davis?
Hi.
Councilmember Lance?
Hi.
Councilmember-
Councilmember Mackin.
Hi.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Hi.
And Mayor Cunningham.
Hi. Thanks very much. Okay, excuse me. Moving on to item Q, consider approval of letter of support for the Brisbane lunch truck regarding a beer and wine license with the Department of Alcohol Beverage and Food. Well, staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've been approached by the operators of the Brisbane lunch truck, which have a lease with the city for their operation on Bay Shore Boulevard at the Park and Ride site. They are wanting to pursue a license through ABC to be able to sell onsite beer and alcohol. It would not be packaged to go, it just would be for consumption onsite. They are requesting that the city send in a letter of support. So if the council is of a mind to do so, we will draft that, we will work with them, draft that and then have a letter for the mayor's signature. Staff has looked at this issue. There are a few issues that we will obviously need to address with the operators around insurance and any kind of issues relative to, cleanliness of the area and stuff with regards to their, their operation. But we don't have any major objections to, to them moving forward with this. So it's brought forward to the council for your, for your consideration.
No questions? All right.
So initially, when we did the lease, it was a, a shorter term lease to see how it worked out. And also, I think, a very minor cost lease. I know we've been in COVID and so probably the use of the parking lot for Park and Ride has not been at its highest use of late because people are working from home. But have we looked at when is this lease up for renewal? And have we looked at any of the costs of that? And then my other comment is that at this point, all restaurant type operations are allowed to do to-go sales. And have we looked into that aspect of it?
I'm sorry, what was the last comment?
All bars and all restaurants are allowed to sell liquor to go, even though it's not in their license. They have a special provision due to COVID. So I'm not sure that we could put that restriction because it would be allowed into the ABC license.
Okay, well, we'll look into that. I mean, they, they've indicated to me that that's not their intent. They do not want to sell alcohol to, you know, to be taken off site. It's just to have with their, with the meals there. But we'll, I'll, Chief Manzias and I'll take a look at the issue with regards to the, the COVID rules. The lease agreement itself, you know, that I didn't bring that forward tonight. We'll, we'll take another look at the, the agreement with them. We, we have kind of given them a little bit of extra break over this last year because of COVID with regards to the lease in terms of just the, the, the cost of it. Given the circumstances, they seem to be doing reasonably well. They haven't indicated to me any, any desire to cease operations. As terms of the site itself, I don't believe we've had any real complaints where either people trying to get parking spaces are not able to get them or cleanliness of the area. They seem to be very attentive to that. So from my end, I think the lease arrangement has gone pretty well, certainly has lived up to expectations.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one question, Madam Mayor. So, you know, I'm in, in favor of, of, you know, moving forward. But the, the, the one concern I have though is, and Tom, if you could, you know, address this as well. You know, potential liability, you know, someone, you know, buys, you know, food and alcohol at the site. And then they leave the premise and they get into an accident. You know, we've leased the property to the food truck. You know, is there any concern that they would also then go after us? There was a problem.
So before Tom answers that, and certainly want him to jump in, but, you know, Stuart is our JPA insurance person. And so this is an issue he has brought forward.
Okay.
With the, with our JPA, and there will probably be adjustments based on the insurance requirements. I would just note that, you know, we allow alcohol sale at a number of our facilities. You know, we've allowed people to do that at Mission Blue for
Right, right.
We've allowed people to have alcohol sales at the community park for certain events. So this is not completely, you know, unique in terms of our relationship with various users of city facilities.
Okay. No, that, that's good to know. Thank you, Clay.
So I don't, Tom, if you had anything in terms of liability issues?
The only comment I would make is the, it's unclear what, what the courts will do post-COVID with some of the loose restrictions, you know, people eating outside the restaurant food being prepared and at least in some cities outside, things like that, that it really is unclear. But I, from the limited cases we've seen to date, I do think there is going to be a great deal of patience and, and understanding by the courts for the fact of, as, as I think Councilmember Connell mentioned, for just the situation with COVID, that we have to be tolerant of folks. So I can't speak with any confidence on the liability question, even with the alcohol, Councilmember Lentz. But Clay hit my other point, which is I was going to pivot right to insurance and it, it sounds like that's already being looked at. So we can report back, I think, if, if you would like.
I know, I, that, that, that answer is satisfactory.
I wish we knew, but we don't.
The, the other facility that we, we lease space to is, is the Brisbane or the Yacht Club, which also sells alcohol.
Alcohol to, to go, Clay?
I don't believe it's to go. It's, 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 they, they, I think they consume it on site for the most part.
Before COVID, the yacht club could only keep it on the premises. After COVID, it appears, although it's hard to get a ruling from ABC because they really don't know what category anybody really is. And nobody wants to put anything in writing. It sounds like the yacht club could sell it to go.
Yeah, and that is, that's, you've said it very well, I think. It really is very hard to get the regulators to go on the record because they're worried about what they've said before, unique circumstance. We just, we literally don't know. And, and the insurance question, I think Clay is, is key.
For me, for me, the question is why we as the leasor or the city would be like writing a letter of recommendation of this? I think it's fine to work with the Brisbane lunch truck to, you know, help them through the pitfalls and whether our lease agreement allows it and all that. But I don't think that it should be coming from the mayor to ask for them to get a license. I don't think it's appropriate.
Is that standard? Like in other places, does the council have to weigh in on whether they think that a business should be granted that type of license?
Well, I think, Lisa, I mean, I, I think we, sometimes we are asked by ABC on these things.
We, the, the license will come through for any recommendations or any concerns that we may have before they make the final determination, the final decision. They'll come out, do their inspection and do anything. It's more for if we've had any issues or any concerns with the establishment, but we've never really made any recommendations on that. Don't make an actual recommendation, yes or no. It's more have we had any issues or contacts or any concerns out there with the establishment before they make the final yes or no decision?
Which has been initiated by ABC, not by the, not by the applicant.
It seems odd to come from the applicant for a letter of recommendation.
I would agree. I would think that that might, I mean, that doesn't seem like a situation ABC really encounters very regularly.
Well, it does. I, I will say this. It's not going to, to Councilmembers Lentz's earlier comment, if I've misunderstood it. The letter of recommendation in and of itself is not going to add liability. I certainly can't think of how it would. But the notion that ABC is going to ask the city, are they compliant with this? Do they do this? Basically, are they in good standing and are they responsible? That is quite common across all sorts of regulatory schemes, as you know, and particularly ABC is, is, is perhaps rightfully very, very careful about who gets those licenses. So whether we proactively say something or whether we reactively say it, I still think ABC is going to come and say, we need this input from the city.
And if it was coming from our, our legal department saying we have not had any problems with them, it'd be one thing. I think it's a different from a letter of recommendation from the city council or the mayor personally.
Yeah. Lisa or Clay, historically, who for ABC, is it the police department that would say there's been no issue, anything like that?
Yes, that's correct. The ABC license comes through us first. And they ask if we've had any issues or any concerns that they, with the establishment. And we do a records check to see if we've had any, any contacts, any issues or concerns. And then we forward that information to them and they make their final decision.
Okay.
So effectively, a letter from us is a moot point then, Tom. Anyway.
It's a gesture of goodwill, but I don't think legally it's in one way or the other.
It's, it's, I think they're requesting it just to show that there's community support in what they're doing. It, it, we're not the decision maker. It, this will be decided by ABC through their own rulemaking process. So it's, it's not determinative. I don't think it's, will undermine their application if we don't. And I don't know that it has particular weight, even if we do.
Yeah, you know, you know what would be in parallel, I think. I'm, I'm sorry, Clay, but it just occurred to me. So the food trucks, a decade ago, 15 years ago, started operating far more, a lot more volume. There, when cities coactively said, hey, we welcome this, they come to the park here, or we've agreed on where they're going to be, or that kind of thing. That's where a proactive letter or resolution can really matter. But they're not, for the most part, they, matter of fact, I don't even think it's for the most part. I'm pretty certain for, for all food trucks back then, they couldn't sell alcohol. But had ABC come in, they might give a little weight to a resolution, but they're really looking at what Lisa described. They're looking at the, the full record.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just kind of commenting with what Terry had said. It comes to mind that if we do this, do we do it for everyone that asks? And are we showing preference towards one business establishment? I think it's a bad precedent.
Well, I think you just answered that. I, I think the reason we're being asked is because we're the property owner. We, if, if somebody else was applying for an ABC license on their private property, I don't, you know, the city would not normally. I mean, we've never gotten into that type of thing. The only reason we're here is because we're the property owner.
At that point, then it should come from, well, I don't know. It would seem it would come from our property owner perspective, not from the mayor.
I think it would still be
Not sure how that would work.
I think ABC reaches out and at that point, I mean,
We can do it that way.
Collectively, I don't have a problem in supporting, I don't have a problem in supporting their efforts. I think we should do anything possible to promote small businesses in Brisbane. And I think that, you know, a beer and wine license allows you to increase your overall ticket and it has great margins. And that's what a lot of businesses, you know, that's how, that's how they survive is on beer and wine sales. So I absolutely think that that's something that, you know, we, I'm happy to, to help this business, but I think it has to go through the appropriate, the appropriate avenues. And I think that, you know, should ABC approach the city about this? I, I would be supportive of the city saying, hey, we had, don't have a problem with this. But I don't think that we would take a proactive approach. And I do think, as Colleen mentioned, even though we could argue that we're doing this because we're the, you know, we're the property owner, I could see future businesses wanting us to support their efforts as well. And I just don't think that it's something that we should be getting involved in. At that stage, I think we should be responding when ABC approaches us.
Yeah, you know, I agree with you, Madison. And, and you know, in, in a way, we, it sounds like we are all in agreement that this would be fine. So I mean, we're, we're kind of like all on record tonight stating that. And I think that could be part of whatever, you know, back and forth, you know, when, when ABC does come before the city and they ask, are they, you know, in compliance, are they, you know, doing, you know, honoring their, their commitments to the agreement and the council's support or whatever, you know, so.
If I may, I haven't done one of these in a long time. But what you do see in ABC applications are, and I imagine the chief has seen this. Each of you can write in your capacity as an elected official for the city, you can write a letter and note you're not doing it, you're doing it individually as an elected official speaking on behalf of the, the business. That is very, very common. But to, I, I believe Councilmember O'Connell and Mackin's point, I'm not sure that I've seen a resolution before the process begins, the application process begins. But individually, there's nothing that bars you from doing it and it's, you'll see stacks of recommendations from elected officials that basically say to ABC, we're comfortable with these operators. And they're just written personally.
And that would be fine with me if anyone wanted to do that. I just don't think that we should take a legal stance on it.
I'm just wondering, probably the, the, the vendor is unaware of the protocols and the process, you know, and if we can individually write, whether that money be stronger, so. But, but I, I get it. We, we could set up a precedent that other businesses don't understand why we wouldn't write, excuse me, a letter for them. And that whole, but the city owns the property thing might just get really muddy. Does that make sense? Yeah.
We got direction.
Yeah, I think you're good.
Okay.
This dog has beaten up.
So we're not going to to support the latter, but we do support the business. And if it comes back to staff, staff will handle it appropriately. Is that, is that a good enough way committed with this? Yes, no? Thumbs up?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to item 10, staff reports. Our city managers report on upcoming activities, please, Clay.
Madam Mayor, I did want to point out there were no public comments on that item as well.
Missed it again, apologies.
Let's see, let's share the screen.
Cautiously hopeful this will go better. Okay. Update on the Brisbane Rental Assistance Program. It's administered by the Samaritan House with our service agency, the YMCA Community Resource Center. The process in the applications, our maximum grant amounts are $4,000 per family. So far, five households have received funds for the total spent of a little under $14,000 and we have a little over $86,000 still available. The CRC believes that this fund will be instrumental in assisting households. Once the state's eviction moratorium ends on September 30th, they've had to prioritize the state's emergency rental assistance program. Housing is key funds due to its legal eviction protections it provides to clients. You can contact YMCA CRC at 650-276-4101, or email them at CRC at YMCA SF dot org to get started. I know this issue kind of came up earlier tonight. The staff has added closed captioning to the state's housing is key video now. It's our second most popular video on YouTube. Subtitles are available via the closed captioning button. The video is on youtube.com/brisbaneca under popular uploads. City of Brisbane Small Business Grant Program is now taking applications. The Brisbane Chamber of Commerce is overseeing the application process. Program will distribute forty grants of $5,000 to each small business. The application portal closes on Wednesday, October 13th at noon. You can visit grants.brisbanechamber.org to view eligibility requirements to apply. The application is available to be complete in Spanish, Chinese, and Tagalog. Community Housing Workshop Series, or the countywide, I should say, Housing Workshop Series kicks off on September 13th. Brisbane is working together with larger countywide communities to share resources and to help involve everyone in shaping our shared future. Visit Let's Talk Housing San Mateo County website at let's talk housing.org. The Brisbane Current Housing Element is available on the general plan website page. Save the date. The new Brisbane Library will be celebrated again on Saturday, October 23rd. We will have library events going from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Come check out the library. We'll have speakers, a day full of engaging library programming for all ages. The celebration will be in person and will be available to view online. And at 7:00 PM that evening, we will do the Brisbane 60th Anniversary Celebration. Join us at the new library as we celebrate sixty years of incorporation. Light appetizers and music, free Brisbane hat giveaway. And you can get more information at visitbrisbaneca.org. And just another reminder that the celebration for the 60th anniversary is at 7:00 PM on Saturday, October 23rd. This weekend, we have a number of activities coming up. Lunafest will be Saturday at 7:00 PM at the BES Field. Tickets are still available for in-person or virtual viewing at brisbaneca.org/lunafest. There are $20 at the gate, must be $18 to attend. Childcare available through Parks and Recreation at brisbaneca.org/lunafest/pno, which stands for Parents' Nights Out. And then the final summer concert in the park will be this Sunday at 2:00 PM with the Purple Ones Prince Tribute Band. And also on Saturday, we have our annual Brisbane Community Cleanup Day. You can come to, it's going to be from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. You can come to 69 South Hill Drive in Brisbane to participate. Coffee, pastries, and supplies will be provided for the volunteer-led cleanup effort for the Crocker Park Trail and Quarry Road Trail. That is.
I you said on Saturday, the 25th of what is the cleanup?
Oh, I'm sorry. The the Saturday, 25th of September.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
It's it.
That's it? Okay. That was good. That was great. Never mind. It's all good. Okay, so moving on to item 11, Mayor Council Matters. Countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. There's lots of them. You didn't take a break much here. Okay, so who would like to start?
I'll start. June 24th, had a Peninsula Clean Energy Board meeting. Just to let you all know, PCE is bringing on geothermal power from Geyser's Power. That'll be in 2022. It's a 10-year contract and it will represent 8% of PCE's power load. Also, there'll be a new program called On Bill Financing that would allow residential customers to finance changes to electric infrastructure and appliances. Allows you to pay it off with low interest rates and also take advantage of rebates. Unlike PG&E, that's available only to commercial customers. This will be residential customers. And more about that will be forthcoming. Also, August 4th had an Infrastructure Utilities and Franchise Subcommittee Meeting. This was to meet with NBS Consulting Group, who's worked for the city on some past projects. Purpose would be to analyze new developments coming to Sierra Point and the Baylands and to propose impact fees that would fund development in new parks or recreation facilities. And of course, using impact fees would reduce the city's costs to develop new projects and also to improve existing ones that we have. Also, you heard about the 25 Park Place. That was another Infrastructure Utilities Subcommittee. September 13, Karen and I had, Karen, do you want to do this one? Public information and technology? Or do you want me to just keep going?
Keep going.
Okay.
I I got plenty to talk about.
Okay, we had a really insightful analysis from consultant client first about our present technology systems. And we're presented with a master plan for the future. And I won't ruin it. It's going to be presented to the full council a little later this year. It was very, very well done. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, next. Who's next? Sarah's next.
Oh, you're just gonna pull it off on me. Almost all of my subcommittees were with Colleen and we talked about Park Park, the rental of the our place that we've discussed tonight. We've talked about the garbage and the recycling, which we've talked about tonight. I did attend an SFO Technical Working Group meeting and got input from our citizens about how that's going. And that's about it, because I was lucky enough to go on vacation this last month.
Hi. Cliff, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see. So we did have Affordable Housing Subcommittee meeting. Madison, myself, and but that was in July and we've already, you know, kind of hashed out the the issues that we were talking about, you know, in regards to the ABA site with the council. So the only other the only other thing that I dealt with was the commute.org meeting last week. And Sam Trans and Caltrain have moved forward with their shuttle study. And you know, there's, you know, trying to work with in a more robust way with commute.org, as well as cities who are doing their own shuttle service, like San Francisco. And then, you know, most people just think that commute.org has every single city represented on the board. And it does not, three cities, Mellow Park, Woodside, and Willow Valley are not represented, but we're doing a really aggressive outreach to them. So you have the the complete support from all cities, including the the county within the county to be part of the organization. So hopefully that that happens by the next Sunday. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Madison.
Okay, we had liaison to Park and Rec Subcommittee, you and I, where the Volunteer of the Year was selected. And we also got a report on what Park and Rec Commissioners have been doing the last year and their plans for next year. And then I had to meet the housing meetings with Cliff. We interviewed different consultants to help us with affordable housing, to think was reported out already when we were back in session prior. We've also, Terry and I have met on Lunafest several times, just working out how the event is gonna flow. We made the last minute decision to move the event outdoors. We just really did not want to have, you know, an outbreak of COVID and have that be something that was at a city-sponsored event. So we decided to move it outdoors and so that people could also enjoy the films with their masks off. Just felt it would be a more enjoyable experience for everyone and also safer. People could spread out. But that means people will need to come with their jackets. So it's gonna be a more casual event this year than it has in the past, be kind of like concerts in the park style almost. We try to find the most protected spot in all of Brisbane from the elements. So we think that the upper field at Brisbane Elementary School is gonna do it. And it's gonna be a night to remember. And then next, we have a public art advisory committee. And the committee discussed other modifications to the implementation guidelines, such as if we could use funds to pay for performing art or temporary art, local art shows, as well as community art sort of educational programming. And we will continue to discuss which of those suggestions we want to bring forward to the council and the committee's work plan at our upcoming meeting. And I think that is all that I have.
Okay, so we didn't mention the Fiscal and Administrative Policies Subcommittee for Terry and I regarding donation, donation policy. Pretty robust discussion there, and that one's gonna have to come back. We're gonna have a follow-up meeting prior to this going to the city council. That's to be determined. The other the other things that I had, because all of these subcommittees have been mentioned, the Library JPA. And they've been getting verbal feedback from the participants in Brisbane regarding our library. They've been getting great feedback on the art installations in the library. They've been all very positive feedback they're getting. The also, the other thing that we discussed at the Library JPA was the annual report and how absolutely incredible the programming over the summer was for the children who were so starved for you know, contact after this last year and a half. And a lot of the underserved families, we we managed to get the majority of the majority of those children into some summer programs, which everybody thoroughly enjoyed. On the foundation side, because I'm also on the board of the Foundation for Semitour Family Libraries. We're doing a huge fundraiser for funds from even more things for our kids for next summer. So that's kind of an exciting thing for me to be involved in this fundraising for its futures. And that is all for me. Our upcoming subcommittees that are still to be determined are Complete Streets and Active Committee, Public Arts Subcommittee, Fiscal and Administrative Policies Subcommittee, we're all still to be determined as a dividing of this. And moving forward to item two is the city council meeting schedule. The next city council meeting is on October 7, 2021. And please note that we have city council workshops scheduled on Sunday, October 24th, 2021, between 10:30 and 1:30 PM. Council meeting schedule is up there. And then you have November 4th, November 18th, December 2nd, and January 2022. So any written communications in those items?
We have written correspondence from Anya Miller regarding oral comments number two, sustainability, Kim Folian, July 15, 2021, BCC meeting, oral communication number one, copy of my testimony, Mary Rogers, upcoming Google Bus Parking Lot Lease Extension, Emile Minara. Thank you. We don't say it enough. Heron Drazek, exploring a San Mateo Union, a San Mateo Credit Union branch in Brisbane, and concerned first responder, American Medical Response is feeling San Mateo County.
Thank you. Moving on to item 12, our communications number two. Do you have any bits of public things to speak on? It's not only tonight's agenda.
I see no raised hand, Madam Mayor, and I see no written correspondences or text messages.
Thank you. Well, then we move on to item 13, which is adjournment. This meeting is now adjourned at 10:13 PM. Thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Good night. Have a nice weekend.
Good night.